Want to welcome everyone. Glad that everyone's here. Thank you for that. Pastor Richard L. Bush from the Mount Zion Baptist Church at 1789 Hawthorne Avenue is here. He's going to come forward, give our invocation, and also lead us in the place of the flag. So would everyone at this time, please thank? Are we all prepared? Let us proceed.
Pray first.
Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your kindness and your mercy. We thank you for all that you have done going and about to do. We thank you for this day, God. We thank you for your blessings. We thank you, God, Lord, for all that has happened, all that's going to happen. And dear God, we ask you to bless each and every person in this place, God, Lord. In the name of Jesus, we know that you can and we know that you will because you've done it so many times before. So, God, we ask you to continue to do what you do best. Keep doing what you're doing. And God, we be careful in giving your name the praise in the precious, prominent, prodigious name of our Lord and Savior. Amen. Thank God. Let us proceed. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item two is agenda changes. Just so you'll know, that item four A and four B will both be tabled till the 16th of January 2018, once we get to those. That's item. If you're here for item A or B, item A's zoning request, rezoning from R-15 to RAD conditional is addressed on Spring Street, 1505 1515. That will be tabled to the 16th of January 2018. And also, the special land use permit for the installation of a cell tower at 1700 Roswell. That will be also at the request of the applicant to be tabled till 16th of January 2018, once we get to those. I know there's a lot of folks out here as we get into the Merrill report. This is a historic moment for our city. We're all very excited about what's fixing to happen. And luckily for me, as I've known Marilyn for, well, I was probably about 210. I'm 230 now. I gauge stuff by my weight, not my age anymore. So, we're excited about Marilyn being sworn in tonight. And as we move toward that, the first order of business under the Merrill report, 2017-496, the approval of the recording of the official city election results for the special election runoff for Ward III held December the 5th, 2017. I would just ask our city clerk, do you have those? I know that we have it in our packet. Those results were certified last, I want to say, last Monday, on the 11th. And Marilyn was, got fully, I don't know, educated, but she got a full dose of her last Thursday of our first meeting, so. Terry?
Yes. We had the election on November the 8th. We had five candidates. It, we had a, it came down to two candidates, which was Marilyn Blackburn and Travis Lindley. On December the 5th, the vote, the total vote was 957 votes. Marilyn Blackburn got 53.73% of the vote with 511 votes. Travis Lindley got 440 votes, which was 46.27% of the votes. That makes Marilyn Blackburn the winner of our Ward III election.
Okay, if I can get a motion to approve the official city results. Motion by Mr. Welch, seconded by Mrs. Wilkinson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote. That's approved. Back that up. That's right. Yeah, I'm trying to say, there's one more vote. Ms. Bluestein is not here. She had a family emergency, and so she is out of town. So, that's approved five to zero. I would ask at this time, if Marilyn Blackburn, will you please step forward? And I'm going to ask that Superior Court Judge Anne Harris come forward, up to the podium up here. And then Marilyn, I'm going to let you, whoever you want to have, come up here with you. She'll be sworn in from this seat right here. So, yeah, come on, you're already in. We've already voted you. I'm going to move this out of the way, move my chair out of the way. Oh, and I, as tradition, whoever you want to come stand with you.
I'd like to ask my godmother to please step up. My younger sister, Gwen, to please come. My two little nieces in the back, Jana, Joanne, would you please come forward? I'm not missing anybody.
Anybody that thinks or wants to be a friend of Marilyn? That's what my dad used to say. And anybody that wants to come, this is a special day for Marilyn. Come on, don't be afraid.
Diane and Steve. Diane and Steve Raisin. Bob Whitfield. Wow. There's Diane.
Diane's fixing her hair. And as tradition, and I've done this for many swearing ends, I have a Bible that's got Marilyn Blackburn's name on it, and also the date which she will be sworn in. And Marilyn, I'm going to give this Bible to, if you want to introduce who's holding the Bible for you, I'm going to get out of the way.
Holding the Bible is Chief Majesty Judge Joyetta Holmes. And Judge Anne Harris. I'm nervous.
Well, Marilyn, this is a special occasion for me. It was only four years ago that I was actually sworn into Superior Court after an election. And so, I know how hard you worked to get here, and you're surrounded by a room full of your friends and your supporters. And I hope you know all of the city of Smyrna supports you. And I'm very honored to be here tonight, as is the rest of the room. And so, welcome to the Smyrna City Council. And if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Marilyn Blackburn.
I, Marilyn Blackburn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear?
Good. That I will well and truly conduct myself.
That I will well and truly conduct myself.
As council member of the city of Smyrna.
As council member of the city of Smyrna.
For the ensuing term.
For the ensuing term.
That I will faithfully enforce the charter.
That I will faithfully enforce the charter.
And ordinances of the city of Smyrna.
And ordinances of the city of Smyrna.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
That I am not the holder of any unaccounted public money.
That I am not the holder of any unaccounted public money.
Do the state or any political subdivision.
Do the state or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And in all my actions as council member.
And in all my actions as council member.
Act as I believe for the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
Act as I believe for the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God.
To make it official, is there an official pen? It's a tacky pen, but it's a pen. It's my pen that I use in court every day. So, if you will sign right there. Congratulations.
I'm official. I know you want a speech, but I have one when we do our comments. So you have to stay.
Love you, Marilyn.
Now the fun begins. Marilyn, we are excited to have you. I was talking to Marilyn earlier in the evening, and we talked about the race. There was five candidates. It was really, as far as I heard, a pretty nice, clean election, and wasn't a lot of mud-slinging, not like some of our previous elections. But I think everyone conducted theirsself in a very high standard, and we're excited about Marilyn coming on board. So, with that, the very first thing, if I can find my glasses, is a proclamation in recognition of Ms. Betty Hammond for 77 years of service at the Mount Zion Baptist Church. I'm going to ask that Pastor Bush and Ms. Hammond's is here somewhere, 77 years. If she will come forward, I'm going to ask that, her first act is being a council member. I'm going to ask that Marilyn Blackburn read this proclamation and present that to Ms. Hammond, who, 77 years of service at the Mount Zion First Baptist Church. Boy, I can't believe how, I don't want to mess this up. How young. All right, Marilyn, if you're ready, if you'll read the proclamation. Y'all can look this way. There you go.
By the mayor of the city of Smyrna, Ms. Betty Hammond, 77 years of service at Mount Zion First Baptist Church. Whereas Carrie Moran, quote, "Ms. Betty," Hammond has played piano accompaniment for Mount Zion First Baptist Church for 77 years. And whereas Ms. Betty started serving in this capacity in 1940, at the age of nine years old, when her grandfather, Reverend H. D. Davenport, was the pastor of Mount Zion. And whereas Ms. Betty taught herself how to play on her grandparents' piano. And whereas current pastor, Richard L. Bush, is the first pastor to recognize Ms. Betty for her commitment, dedication, faithfulness, and loyalty now. Therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, the mayor of the city of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim December 18th, 2017, a day of recognition for Ms. Betty Hammond, as we honor her incredible accomplishment of nearly eight decades of service in our community and ministry at Mount Zion First Baptist Church. Congratulations, Ms. Betty.
That was perfect, Marilyn. That may be the easiest thing you've ever done. You're going to do. Item D is mayor's assignments for council committees, and with a new council member, I will just briefly read these committee assignments. I've tried to have every council member chair a committee. Finance Administration chaired by Ron Fennel. Human Resources and Court Services chaired by Marilyn Blackburn. Public Works is chaired by Corky Welch. Community Development, Doug Stoner. Parks and Recreation, Susan Wilkinson. Public Safety, Derek Norton. Vision Committee is Andrea Bluestein. And for those, Marilyn will also serve on the Parks and Recreation Library and the Vision Committee. The rest of the council members are just scattered out, and it's not anything new to them. This is Marilyn's night, so. I can't say it again how excited we are for me to have a full slate of elected officials and for those folks in Ward III to be represented as they should be. And Marilyn's going to be fine. She's going to do fine. Item four is land issues, zonings, and annexation. As I mentioned at the first of the meeting, item A and B will be tabled, and I'm going to just, is there anybody here for item A, which is a public hearing zoning request, rezoning for R-15 to RAD? Yes. And we are going to table this. Is there anything that you?
No, we're perfectly comfortable with tabling it.
Okay. Perfect. I just wanted to make sure, this is an advertised public hearing, and if some folks were here to speak, we don't take any testimony tonight, but just wanted to make sure. So, okay. Marilyn, if you will just read this item and then make a motion to table, then we will go from there. Push that button.
I move that item four A, zoning request Z-17-013, be tabled until the January 16th city council meeting.
Second.
And motion is second to table this rezoning request of 11618. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Perfect. That's approved six zero. Item B, 2017-362, is a zoning request for special land use permit for the installation of a cell tower at 1700 Roswell Street. Is there anybody here for that issue? You're here also for that?
I'm sorry, I spoke for A, and I'm actually here for B, so. Why am I tabling for B?
Attorneys. Make sure you bill right. Okay, so you're here for B, right? Okay. And I never understand, we don't have to swear in attorneys whenever they come to these hearings. Okay, but anyway, if there's no one here about the cell tower, Marilyn's going to make a motion to table this to the 16th of January 2018. Marilyn?
At the request of the applicant, I move that item four B zoning request Z-17-019, be tabled until January 16th, 2018 city council meeting.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved six zero. Thank you very much. Item C on the land issues, zonings, and annexation, 2017-433, public hearing only, zoning request Z-17-024, rezoning from R-20 to RAD conditional for the development of five single-family residents, 1.3 acres, land lot 490 and 519, 2475, 2485, and 2495, Dixie Avenue, Longo Homes. Is the applicant here? Okay, all right. You sure you're here for? Ms. Tammy Satter Jones, will you please give us the background on that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The applicant, Longo Homes Incorporated, is seeking approval of an annexation and rezoning from R-20 to RAD conditional for the development of five single-family detached residents at a density of 3.82 units per acre. The Planning and Zoning Board heard the rezoning request at the November 13th, 2017 meeting, and made a recommendation for approval by a vote of six to zero. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R-20, pardon me, to RAD conditional for the development with conditions. Senior Planner, Rusty Martin, is here to give you additional background information.
And for those that are looking at the agenda, C, D, and E are all tied in together. So, Rusty, well, first of all, let me ask you, if there's anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request? Okay, and this is in Marilyn Blackburn's district, and I'm sure she's going to let Rusty do his thing and go from there.
Yes, Mayor, I'm going to ask Rusty to please.
Thank you. This is a rezoning case from R-20 in Cobb County. This is an annexation rezoning request, so they're happening concurrently. In the county, this property is owned R-20, residential, single-family, minimum lot size 20,000 square feet. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to RAD conditional. Currently, there are three single-family residences on site. They're proposing to demo those residences and build five new single-family homes. The proposed density for the site is 3.82 units per acre. And as you can see, the zoning map up there reflects the properties being currently in the county, but after this zoning action, it'll be located in the city. In the county, the property has a future land use designation of low-density residential, which is under three units per acre. With the proposed density of being 3.8 units per acre, this rezoning will also require a land use change to moderate-density residential, which is up to 4.5 units per acre. Here's the proposed site plan for the site. All the homes will face Dixie Avenue. Each home will have its own individual driveway. And then, they'll have the following setbacks. Proposed front setback, 25 feet. Exterior side setback of 10 feet. An interior side between the proposed homes of five feet, and then a rear setback of 30. Here's proposed open space that conditional developments require. Here's proposed storm-water detention facility for the property. And then, this is a 20-foot access easement and drainage easement for those homes. In addition to all that, there are four requested variances that are associated with this conditional development. The first being a front setback reduction from 35 feet to 25 feet. The next being an interior side setback reduction from 10 feet to five. The third being a lot size reduction from 15,000 to 7,567 square feet. And then, the final being a lot width reduction from 100 feet down to 50 feet. And as you can see, staff is supportive of all these requests. These are similar variances that are granted to infill development within this general area. And these variances are within those previously approved. Here are some pictures of the proposed home elevations, and this will give you a general idea of the architecture and style of home that'll be proposed for the site. Here are pictures of the site as they exist today. And then, some pictures of the adjoining properties, so you get an idea of what the surrounding area looks like. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning of the subject property from R-20 to RAD conditional for five single-family homes at a density of 3.8 units per acre, with the following conditions. The first is a list of standard conditions that deal with the composition of the home, the requirement for an HOA, open space requirements, storm-water management, the requirement for underground utilities, and then specific traffic improvements. In addition to no burying of debris on site, the requirement for streetlights, and then they must follow the tree ordinance and landscaping requirements. In addition to those standard conditions that are laid out in Section 1201, staff has added some special conditions. And those deal with number 13, which is the minimum setbacks for the site. I've already read those for you. Number 14 requires a minimum driveway length of 22 feet. Number 15 requires a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet. 16 is required minimum lot width of 50 feet. 17 is a minimum floor area, the homes of being a minimum of 1,800 square feet. 18 is the developer shall provide a five-foot sidewalk along Dixie Avenue. 19 limits the building height to 35 feet. 20 sets the maximum lot coverage to 45% of the lot area. 21 is, requires a developer to be responsible for the installation of water line and sewer lines. 22 requires a storm-water management area to be located on its own lot. 23 deals with trees within the limits of disturbance. 24 ties the approval of zoning to the specific site plan. 25 ties the approval of the zoning to the building elevations reflected. And 26 is a list of additional stipulations that were provided by the applicant. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Martin?
I have a question.
Yes, okay.
So, are these going to be front entries, as far as the driveways will be in the front?
Yes, these will be front entries off of Dixie Avenue.
Okay. Can you, I know on the site plan, I saw it says a proposed driveway that's to the right of lot number five, or house number five?
That's a 20-foot access easement. That's so if there's any maintenance that needs to be done to the detention facility, the HOA has a right to access that facility through that access easement.
So, and I see where the access easement is, but I'm.
That's not a driveway. That's just, that's just an area dedicated to access the detention facility.
Okay, great. Thank you for explaining that.
Any other questions, Mr. Martin? Okay, at this time, Rusty, if you'll have a seat. Mr. Garvis Sam, who claims he represents, I say that in jest.
Well, first of all, Mr. Mayor, good evening, and thank you all for being here and allowing me to speak. My name is Garvis Samms. I'm in the law firm of Samms, Larkin, Huff &amp; Bally. And I am particularly proud to be here, not only in representation of my client, but also to congratulate Marilyn Blackburn, and to be the first case that she's going to hear. to congratulate Marilyn Blackburn and to be the first case that she's gonna hear, consider, and hopefully approve. It is Christmas. It's close to it. But that being said, I do appreciate being a part of this tonight, and the congregation of your friends and your supporters and your families is phenomenal. In response to the mayor's question, you said you don't understand why we, attorneys that is, are not sworn in before we testify. That's because there's an irrevocable presumption that lawyers are, as officers of the court, are presumed to tell the truth, so.
Yeah, I don't even know who y'all represent. Now, you do.
I'm just telling you what the presumption is. It may not be irrevocable after all, but anyway, I'm here tonight representing Longo Custom Homes and Mr. Vince Longo, who's here tonight. Senior Planner Rusty Martin's done an excellent job, as he always does, saying out the facts and circumstances. You've got a long agenda tonight, so I'll be brief. This is an application that was heard, considered and approved back in November by the Planning and Zoning Board. We had one interested, one gentleman who was interested and spoke, but he said during the course of his presentation, he had no opposition to the application, and I don't believe there's any here tonight, which of course is no guarantee. But what I'd like for you to do is, at your convenience, maybe during my presentation, look at the handouts we've given you. Not only is the site plan there and the future land use map, zoning map, but also architectural renderings and elevations of the homes that Mr. Martin just showed you. If you look at one of the last sheets, you'll see it's about a last components. It's about a three or four-page sheet of just how customized these homes are. I mean, those are not stipulations and conditions of the zoning, because I wouldn't want to paint any client in that corner, but it gives you an idea of the absolute minutia that he addresses in building these homes. And they are custom homes. They're not spec homes that he's building. So each one that he builds will be for a specific individual. This is a one point three-two acre tract of land. The entirety of it fronts on Dixie Avenue in between Belmont and Pierce, and it's part of a huge, and I don't know how many miles, square miles, but it's a huge unincorporated island of properties. And what we are doing, though, is not adding to that and creating additional unincorporated island components, but we're eating away or picking away, if you will, at the island. And of course, you know, you're required by law not to curate an island, and if there is one curated, then you are responsible for ultimately trying to mitigate that or lessen, ameliorate the adverse of impact on that. This is an unincorporated Cobb County. We hope it's going to be in the corporate limits of the City of Smyrna. You've received, your staff's received, your city attorneys received a letter of no opposition from Cobb County, so the county is not objecting to it. I think the ultimate goal is to, if possible, have a major assemblage of the entirety of this, and I know your staff's looking at that ultimately happen, ultimately happening. What Mr. Longo proposes is a rezoning from R twenty in unincorporated Cobb County to RAD conditional for the purposes of the construction and development of five custom-built quality homes at the density that was just mentioned, which is well below the max density you could have within this district. To let folks, I know y'all know what it is, but to let folks behind me know where it is, it's not on Dixie Avenue. It's on the other side of the railroad tracks from this fantastic Belmont mixed-use development that has finally come to fruition after we, y'all have talked and planned and refined it and attuned to what it is today and what it's going to be. Of course, that's much higher density. It's a mixed-use development. This is just single-family residentially detached homes, but your staff has recommended approval, and so has your Planning and Zoning Board. It was a six-oh vote because one of the planning commissioners was not present that night, so the reason for the unaccounted-for vote. We submitted a stipulation letter on November the seventh. There became a part of staff's comments and recommendations. We're agreeable to all the general stipulations, the specific stipulations, the standard stipulations, the stipulations that we have imposed. All become conditions and a part of the grant of the rezoning. These homes will be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and upwards to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Be three-to-four-bedroom homes. They are, in fact, front-loaded because the configuration of the property doesn't lend itself to a rear or a side-loaded set of circumstances. We've agreed to the architectural style and composition. You see in those handouts, all of these are gonna be for sale. There are no rental components or contingencies to this at all. There'll be a mandatory HOA. It'll be covered in conditions and restrictions that will be governed or actually administered by the mandatory HOA, and that'll contain strict architectural controls. But also, the mandatory HOA is responsible for all the open space, the any subdivision signage, the detention, stormwater detention, and the common areas. This will be managed by a third-party, independent, third-party management corporation that will run the day-to-day activities of the HOA and make certain that the HOA is properly insured. At this price point, you know, typically you're not, you're not gonna have that as a worry, but nevertheless, it's an added comfort, we think, for you. I'm not gonna go through the stipulations that Mr. Martin so easily did, but I will tell you this, that from a stormwater management perspective, we have submitted a preliminary hydrology study. We're in the process of revising that. It'll be ready for plan review. Also, we are in compliance with all the Public Works Director's comments and recommendations regarding sewer and other utilities. We also comply with all the Smyrna Fire Marshal's recommendations, and there's a number of stipulations regarding that. We have set out one provision so the Community Development Director can make minor modifications. I don't mean to increase the density or change anything problematically, but just to tweak the plan as it goes through plan review in case we have to reposition a setback or whatnot. This is consistent with your future land use map, if it were in the city, and we hope that it is, and we trust and hope that you'll follow your Planning Commission's or Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation and your staff's recommendation, and then this will be the first resounding victory in Ms. Blackburn's district. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You could have left.
I just wish, it's Christmas. I don't know what else to say. I said that at the start, but thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
You probably had enough votes before you started talking.
Yeah, I know that, but my class probably watching on the live stream of this. Better get it right.
Any questions of, Marilyn, you got any questions of, anyone have any questions of Mr. Sam?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So one of the things that was mentioned about the renderings that are in the package, some of them look like they're almost all hardy plank, but I think I was reading in the stipulations that they're gonna be a mixture of hardy plank or cement board, I guess, and other elements as well.
Stack stone, brick, hardy plank, hardy plank shake, hardy plank, some siding. You know, your ordinance doesn't allow any side to be one hundred percent horizontal siding, so it'll be, it'll be a mixture that'll comport with your own ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just wanted to clarify.
No, that's a good clarification.
Any other questions, Mr. Samms? All right, if there's no other questions, then I'm gonna, we're gonna conclude this public hearing is over with. We're going to item D, twenty seventeen dash four sixty-three, is approval of the ordinance, twenty seventeen dash fourteen, annexation request, one hundred percent owners requesting annexation of all tracts of land lying in land lots four ninety and five nineteenth, seventeenth District, second section, Cobb County, Georgia, a total of one point three acre tract being known as twenty-four seventy-five, twenty-four eighty-five, twenty-four ninety-five Dixie Avenue, Smyrna, Georgia. The effective date of this annexation would be January one, I guess that'd be twenty eighteen. Is that correct? About twenty seventeen. Okay. I'm gonna ask, this is also a public hearing. I'm gonna ask, is there anyone here? It's not a public hearing? Okay, all right. Then I will ask that, we don't need any background on this. I'll just ask Marilyn Blackburn, if she will make the motion to approve the annexation.
I move that ordinance two zero one seven dash fourteen, annexing tracts of land in land lots four ninety and five nineteen of the seventeenth District, seventh section of Cobb County, known as twenty-four seventy-five, twenty-four eighty-five and twenty-four ninety-five. Dixon Ave be approved.
Second, and I'd like to make it effective January one, two thousand and eighteen, and in Ward Three, Smyrna.
All right, we got a motion, second, to approve this effective January one, two thousand and eighteen, and become a part of Ward Three. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved six-zero. All right, item four E, twenty seventeen dash four ninety-three, is the final vote zoning request Z seventeen dash zero twenty-four, rezoning from R twenty to RAD conditional for the development of five single-family residences, one point three acre land lots four ninety and five nineteen, twenty-four seventy-five, twenty-four eighty-five and twenty-four ninety-five Dixie Avenue, Longo Homes, Inc. Ms. Marilyn Blackburn.
I move that zoning request Z seventeen dash twenty-four, rezoning from R dash twenty to RAD conditional for the development of five single-family residences be approved, subject to the conditions itemized by the Community Development.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved six-zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good evening and a Merry Christmas.
Item five is previous licenses. We have none. Item six, formal business. Item A, twenty seventeen dash four eight zero, is approval, the reappointment of Planning and Zoning Board members as follows: Tom Bartlett, Ward One, Leslie Lightfoot, Ward Two, Earl Rice, Ward Four, Denny Campo, Ward Six, and David Monroe, Ward Seven, for the terms to expire December of two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Second. We gotta make a motion for.
Ms. I'm gonna make a motion for six A, twenty seventeen dash four eighty, to approve the reappointment of the Planning and Zoning Board members as follows: Tom Bartlett, Ward One, Leslie Lightfoot, Ward Two, Earl Rice, Ward Four, Denny Campo, Ward Six, and David Monroe, Ward Seven, for the terms to expire two thousand and nineteen. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion. It's approved six-zero. Item B, twenty seventeen dash four seventy-eight, approval to reappoint, appointment of Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board members as follows: Lisa Castleberry, Ward Two, Carleen McNabb, Ward Four, Eric Dennis, Ward Seven, for terms to expire December two thousand and nineteen. Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve item two oh one seven dash four seven eight for the approval of the reappointment of the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board members as follows: Lisa Castleberry, Ward Two, Carleen McNabb, Ward Four, and Eric Dennis, Ward Seven, for terms to expire December two thousand and nineteen.
Motion, have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved six-zero. Item six C on the formal business, twenty seventeen dash four seventy-nine, approval, approve the reappointment of Parks and Recreation Commission members as follows: Nicholas Bergeron, Ward One, Irene Agrey-Anti, or something, Ward Two, Tom Sconzo, Ward Four, Paula Weeks, Ward Six, and Jay Barrett-Carter, Ward Seven, for the terms to expire December two thousand and nineteen. Ms. Wilkinson.
At this time, I would like to move to approve item six C, two oh one seven dash four seven nine, approve the reappointment of Park and Recreation Commission members as follows: Nicholas Bergeron, Ward One, Irene Agri-Antui, Ward Two, Tom Sconzo, Ward Four, Paula Weeks, Ward Six, and Jay Barrett-Carter, Ward Seven, for terms to expire December two thousand and nineteen.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved six-zero. Item six D is approval of twenty seventeen dash four eighty-nine, approval of Ward Two appointment, Jane Berman to the Smyrna Tree Board to fulfill term to expire August of two thousand and twenty. I'll ask that Derek Norton, or Derek, or Corky, or whoever wants to make.
At this point, I'll move to approve item six D, approval of the Ward Two appointment of Jane Berman to the Smyrna Tree Board to fulfill term to expire August two thousand and twenty.
Motion is second.
Second, I'll second.
Ms. Blackburn beat you. She's catching on. Motion is second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved six-zero. Item six E on the formal business is twenty seventeen dash four ninety-eight, approval of the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, FY eighteen budget amendment for staff merit increases. I'll ask finally, Ms. Marilyn, no, no, Ms. Marilyn. Marilyn's over here. Tammy's over here. Tammy Satter Jones, to give us the background on that.
A budget amendment is necessary for staff merit increases to be effective January first, two thousand and eighteen. Merit increases are determined based upon an employee's job performance appraisal. A budget amendment of up to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the general fund contingency is needed for this increase. Applicable taxes are included in the total. It is recommended that the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen budget amendment be approved.
Mr., this is under Mr. Ron Fennell, who chairs the Finance and Administration Committee. Mr. Fennell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a contingency line item budgeted for two eighty. There is FICA and other incidentals that are in that, and so my motion is to approve a budget line item for these merit increases of two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, within line with the budget recommendations for merit pay increases. Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved six-zero. Item, sorry, that would be six F. Ordinance twenty seventeen dash sixteen, approve the amendment to the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter fourteen, entitled Animals, Article One, Section fourteen dash eleven, Control of Animal, Amending A General Control, Adding C, Which Prohibits Tethering of Animals. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Several years ago, the city outsourced its animal control services to Cobb County to ensure the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances aligns with recent amendments adopted by Cobb County Board of Commissioners. Staff has amended Chapter fourteen, animals, by adding language that states that it is unlawful for any owner of a dog to chain, fasten, tie or otherwise tether the dog to a stationary object or pulley run as a means of confinement. An exception to the ordinance is that a dog can be temporarily confined by tether while under the supervision of its owner. Staff does recommend approval of this ordinance amendment.
Mr. Ron Fennell, who chairs Finance and Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In accordance with the agreement reached with Cobb County for them to provide the animal control services for Cobb County residents in Smyrna, this ordinance just complies with the agreement we made with them, so I move approval of ordinance two zero one seven dash one six. And we just read it, so.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved six-zero. Item G, twenty seventeen dash four seventy-one, authorize the City of Smyrna to accept and the mayor to execute the two thousand and eighteen LMI G Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant application from the Georgia Department of Transportation in the amount of four hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars, eighty-seven cents, and to supplement this grant, which required a thirty percent match. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
The Georgia Department of Transportation has informed the city of the availability of an LMI grant in the amount of four hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-seven cents for the current two thousand and eighteen fiscal year. The funding from this grant will allow the city to resurface several streets. The city's thirty percent match will be funded through the two thousand and sixteen SLOST. Public Works recommends approval for the mayor to execute the two thousand and eighteen LMI grant application and supplement this grant with the required thirty percent match.
Mr. Corky Welch, who chairs that Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hearing no opposition from the audience, I'd like to make a motion to approve item two zero one seven, authorizing the City of Smyrna to accept and the mayor to execute the two thousand and eighteen Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant application from the Georgia Department of Transportation in the amount of four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, three hun- four hundred and ninety-five thousand- amount of $495,374.87, and to supplement this grant with the required 30% match. I'd like to make that in form of a motion.
Second.
A motion is second to approve this funding that we get from the state DOT. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to receive almost $500,000 from the DOT, which is great. They're usually taken, they're usually not given, so we're good with that. Let's approve 6-0. Item 6H, POL 2017-01, approval of the 2017 Purchasing Card Policy Manual for the City of Smyrna Visa Purchasing Card Program and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Staff requests approval of the purchasing card policy for the City of Smyrna Visa Purchasing Card Program. The purchasing card is managed by the State of Georgia and Bank of America. The purchasing card policy has been implemented to provide departments with a more efficient process for making single purchases less than $5,000. Staff does recommend approval of the purchasing card policy.
Mr. Ron Fennel, who chairs the Finance and Administration Committee. Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Administration Committee recommends this upgrade in our controls within the spending aspect, the purchasing card manual, and approve, move approval of POL 2017-01.
A motion is second to approve this policy. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 6-0. Item 6J, 2017-481.
6I.
Pardon me?
They look just alike.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I would have called it eventually. Thank you, though. Item I, POL 2017-02, approval of the 2017 City Fuel Card Policy Manual for the City of Smyrna Wright Express Fuel Card Program and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. The background, Ms. Jones.
Staff requests approval of the City Fuel Card Policy for the Wright Express WEX Fuel Card Program. The WEX Fuel Card Program is made available to the city by a contract with the State of Georgia. The WEX Fuel Card has been implemented to provide employees that are traveling on city business in a city vehicle with a more convenient way to pay for fuel while outside of our city. It also offers the city cost savings by exempting all fuel purchases from applicable taxes. Staff recommends approval of the City Fuel Card Policy.
Mr. Ron Fennel, who chairs the Finance and Administration Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is another in the, hopefully, final one of these for the year of these items on upgrading our purchasing policy, and I move approval of POL 2017-02.
Motion is second to approve this policy manual. All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Item J, 2017-481, approval to change the fee schedule for new rental fees for athletic fields and complexes, add rental fees for the Reed House, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. The background, Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones.
Staff requests a change to the city's fee schedule to reflect new rental fees for athletic fields and sports complexes at various city parks, and to add rental fees for the new Reed House facility. These proposed field rental changes and the new Reed House rental rates have been reviewed by both the Council's Finance and Administration Committee and the Council's Parks and Recreation Committee. Staff recommends approval of the proposed changes to the fee schedule for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson, who chairs the Parks and Recreation Committee. Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to move to approve item 6J, 2017-4-481, approval to change the fee schedule for new rental fees for athletic fields and complexes, add rental fees for the Reed House, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Second.
Motion is second to approve this fee schedule. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved 6-0. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item 8 is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows: Approval of the December 4th, 2017 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the November 30th, 2017 committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item C, approval of renewal with Georgia Municipal Association for 2018 workers' compensation, insurance coverage, and administration, and authorize mayor to sign any related documents. Item D, approval to award RFP 18-006 Concord Road Linear Park Landscape Improvements Phase 2 to the lowest bidder, Ashford Gartners, for $72,498.21, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item E, approval to award RFP 18-005 Jungle Park Site Work to the lowest bidder, Integrated Land Design LLC, CDBG Funding for $58,380.85, and authorize the mayor to execute any and all related documents. And item F, authorize Atkins Park Tavern to operate a beer/wine specialty two-item cocktail station beyond the boundaries of the premises of Atkins Park Tavern, covered by the license at the Smyrna Ugly Sweater, Ugly Christmas Sweater Block Party and Movie Night event in the downtown area Wednesday, December 20th, 2017, 5:30 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. at an assigned vendor spot within the approved event. The exact location of the cocktail drink station is to be within the food service area for the event, from West Spring Street to Village Green Circle, from Village Walk Bank Street to King Street Southeast. Streets closed during the event will be King Street in front of the Veterans Memorial, from Bank Street to Village Green Circle in front of the Community Center. And this item is being rescheduled because of the snowstorm that occurred a few weeks ago.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved 6-0. Item 9 is committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Derek Norton.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to start by congratulating Marilyn Blackburn on her election. Looking forward to working with you. And I have a statement from Terry Anolowicz, our former council member and newly elected state house member, who couldn't be here tonight, that she wanted me to read. She said, "Hi, everyone. I'm so sorry I can't be with you tonight for Marilyn Blackburn's official swearing-in to the Smyrna City Council. I know she's going to do an outstanding job as Ward 3's representative, and it is wonderful to see this historic addition to the city council. Again, I know Marilyn will adeptly represent every resident and business owner in Ward 3, and I look forward to seeing what she accomplishes during the rest of her term." Second thing I wanted to bring up, I know that we've been talking a lot about the hands-free ordinance for the last, I guess, what, six weeks now? And when I presented it, I talked about the fact that the Smyrna Police Department purchased devices that you can affix your phone to your car. And for the first 90 days, they would pass this proposed ordinance, they would pass this out to drivers who were pulled over who didn't have a way to do that. And I just wanted to show you what we're talking about. So they've got a magnet that goes into your vent of your car, and then something that you stick on to the back of your cell case or your phone. And then it's just a magnet and puts on there so that you can do everything hands-free and voice-activated. So it's got the police department logo on it, and I just want to thank Chief Lee for purchasing several hundred of these to make our citizens safer on our roads. And lastly, just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday. I hope that you and your family have a safe holiday season. With that, I yield.
Councilmember Marilyn Blackburn.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I want to say, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, and citizens of Smyrna, I am proud and humbled to serve with and for you as Smyrna City Council Representative for Ward 3. And first, let me give thanks to God, because without him, I just wouldn't be here. And I want to say thank you to my mother, who is resting in heaven. She's been with me the entire time, I know, watching over me. I'd also like to thank my family members and my friends. If any of my family is still out there, would you please stand?
Come on, don't be afraid. She's in.
I guess the niece is left and all that. Okay, you're still here. Don't sit down. And any of my core team, if you're still out there, would you please stand? These are the individuals who have made this walk and journey for me possible, and I want to say to you publicly, thank you for your service and your commitment. God bless you. You were there for me most, and you put up signs, knocked on doors, stuffed mailers, and so much more. This was truly a grassroots campaign on a shoestring budget, and you are the reason we stand here tonight. I hope to make you proud. I also would like to congratulate Travis Lindley for running a spirited campaign. Travis, thank you for your service to Smyrna. I look forward to working with you. Finally, and most importantly, I would like to thank the citizens of Smyrna Ward 3. Some of you may know it, but on December 5th, you made history. For the first time in 145 years of existence, you elected an African-American to Smyrna's City Council. Forty-six percent of Smyrna's population are people of color, and they now have a seat at the table. You made that happen. This is something we can all be proud of. If you voted for me, thank you. If you didn't vote for me, I pledge to listen and understand your needs and concerns and serve as your representative as well. I will work hard every day to gain your trust and be a councilwoman for all Ward 3 constituents. During my campaign, I knocked on hundreds of doors and listened as you all shared your ideas of what will make Smyrna a better place to live, work, play, and raise a family. I pledge to put families first and provide you with a true voice on city council. I spoke of four fundamental pillars which will lead our community. First will be livability. The second is education. The third is accountability. And finally, the D is direction and vision. As someone who served on the Vision Committee, I understand that it all starts with a vision that clearly defines our goals, who we want to be as a community. The vision should be used to guide all our decisions and should represent the interest of families first. To the mayor again, and my fellow council members, I look forward to learning from you and working closely with you, even though you threw me into the fire. And the opportunities facing our city, we share a common bond that is love of the city that we are living in and the desire to make it the place to live and raise a family. Let's work together and do just that. I want to wish everyone out there a very Merry Christmas, a blessed and Happy New Year, and thank you so much, Ms. Wonderful Patsy Jo, for being here tonight. God bless you. Thank you all.
Mr. Corky Welch.
I don't want to follow that. I'd just like to make a couple of points regarding my committees. One is coming up on December 6th, between 9:00 and 4:00, is Bring One for the Chipper at Home Depot, Cumberland Boulevard. They ask that you take your ornaments and your lights off your trees, and they will provide you with a little seedling when you leave.
That's on what date?
January 6th, from 9:00 to 4:00 at Home Depot on Cumberland Boulevard. Secondly, I'm going to announce for Scott Stokes a trash pickup schedule for the holidays, and I'm thinking this is both for Christmas and New Year's. The email I saw was just for New Year's, but I suspect it's Christmas and New Year's. Monday pickup will be on Tuesday. Tuesday pickup will be on Wednesday. Thursday and Friday pickup is unchanged. No large waste of large items during this week, or large items. They won't do any appliances or any large amounts of waste at that time. And regarding that issue, limbs, everybody, including myself, had some limbs and storm debris. The city will only pick up something that is cut to less than six foot long and less than eight inches in diameter. But if you have something that's on the right, place it on the right of way, and the city will eventually pick it up, but that's the parameter that we use. Mayor, other than, I'd like to welcome Marilyn aboard as well. She'll be my neighbor over here to my left, and it's been the empty seat for a while, but wish you luck. That's all.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to congratulate Marilyn Blackburn and welcome her to the council and let her know how excited I am to have her on the council, and I'm looking forward to working with her. And then I will also move on to announce some things from the library. Tomorrow, December 19th, there's two events. At 10:30, babies age 2, 0 to 2, can join the block party. The library will have a developmentally appropriate blocks to play with. This event is great for building dexterity skills and socialization. And at 4:00 p.m., kids aged 5 to 12 are invited to Tinker Tuesday. They will be building bridges with K-necks. Please bring an adult to build with you. Both events are being held in the meeting room. And then also, I want to invite everybody that's interested to come to the Smyrna's Ugly Christmas Sweater Block Party and Movie Night, which is going to take place December 20th, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. And that should be, it's a new event, and it should be very fun down in the downtown. The other thing I want to mention for people to keep in mind, if they're interested in the plans for the park at North Cooper Lake Park, there is going to be another public meeting at the Community Center in the Dogwood Room on January 25th at 6:00 p.m. And that's a little ways in the future, but I just wanted to mention that to keep it in mind if it's something that interests you. And then I'll be announcing that again. And the city is pursuing a $200,000 grant from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources for the funding of this park, and they're looking at doing some bicycle trails and things like that. So with that, I yield.
Mr. Doug Stoner.
Thank you, Your Honor. I actually have nothing to report from community development, but I do have a few comments about our new colleague, Marilyn Blackburn, someone who I've known for many years. We have played politics together over the years, Marilyn. But beyond that issue, I'm very proud of having her as one of our colleagues here on the city council. And as a native, this being my hometown, I'm very proud of the progress we've been doing, the sense of the physical structures that you see around us, the one you're sitting in today, but also in the sense of social progress that my hometown has done. And Marilyn's definitely an example of that, and we hope to continue forward. And again, want to thank her for her efforts in the community and now being one of us here on the city council and working toward the progress of Smyrna. Thank you, Marilyn.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's year end, it's clearinghouse time, so I'm going to get a few items out of the way if you don't mind. I want to just remember, Kristin Robinson, who is our finance director, she's recovering from elective surgery during this holiday period. She keeps us in order, in line, and balanced. I want to just acknowledge and thank her for what she's doing. She'll return to full work schedule after the holidays. I want to thank Troop 554 of the Boy Scouts for allowing me to come speak to them today. They punched their community service and politics badge today by having me be there to answer some of their questions, and they asked good questions, by the way. So I'm proud of those future leaders that are among us. I want to thank Chief Lee and the others in the public safety field who helped us celebrate another Safe Holiday Campaign kickoff for Team Georgia, our Safe and Sober Driving, statewide driving coalition. And that work goes on every day. I do also want to acknowledge my friends, the Farokis. They didn't know that I would say anything, but my good friend, Amir Faroki, who is also taking the oath of office, being sworn in, is a new member of the Atlanta City Council. He and I served on the board of the Atlanta Fire Foundation prior to both of us getting involved in politics. So thank you both for being here tonight. I know how committed you are in Cobb County to being involved in public service and academia. So I appreciate seeing you here. I did want to mention that our staff, both Tammy and Scott, have been helpful. I don't want to overlook other members of the staff. Maxwell is helpful, too. We've been working with the United States Postal Service for quite a while to try to get recognition of those taxpayers for Smyrna who happen to be in a different zip code, the Mableton 30126, yours truly among them. So when annexation occurs over time, sometimes the zip code... So when annexation occurs over time, sometimes the ZIP code doesn't change as readily as do the lines on the map for, you know, city and county borders, et cetera. So I want to thank the United States Postal Service. We do have something in writing. I will have a publication the first of the year, but in January, those people who live in Ward 7, who have a Smyrna tax bill, even though they have a Mabelton mailing address and a ZIP code, they can now use Smyrna 30126, and the mail will get to them. That means something to those folks. It may not mean for the rest of you, but thank you for all those who help work hard to get this done. Also want to root on the Falcons. They're going to get started in a few minutes. You've got to beat those Bucks. And I'm a Georgia Tech fan, but I want to root for the Georgia Bulldogs. It's not often that a team in our state gets a chance to win a national championship, so I'll be rooting for them as well.
Just cut your comments. We get to see the kickoff.
And then finally, I want to note the historical significance of having my, my friend join the council. Others have mentioned it, too, but I am expressly proud of my friend, Maryline Blackburn, for helping us overdue, I might add, make history. She made history many times in her life, and as a Grammy-nominated singer, songwriter, artist, she's going to be heard from in more ways than one from this day forward, as she's already been a special person. Thank you. Mary.
I'm going to go back to Maryline. I think she's got one more announcement to make.
I'm so sorry. I totally forgot about this, but thank you all for the wonderful words of welcome. I want to invite all of you to Atkins Park for a little small reception. And if you don't know where Atkins Park is, you just walk out this door, and you'll walk right into it. So please join us over there after this. And with that, I yield, Mayor.
I'm not going back to Mr. Fennel. That may never make it to Atkins Park. Tammy, you got anything else?
Yes, I'd like to say congratulations to Councilwoman Maryline Blackburn. The staff and I look forward to working with you. I'd also like to express condolences to our library director, Mary Moore. She lost her mother a few weeks ago, and wishing, would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and to you, our citizens, and to our staff.
Scott Andrews, anything? Scott, nothing? Scott Cochran.
Yeah, I'll, I'll briefly say the same as others have said, that Maryline, I'm really looking forward to working with you. I've enjoyed the meetings with her already, and I'll say the swearing-in today was, I mean, I've been sworn in here a lot of times myself, and I've never been as moved in a swearing-in, including my own, as I was today. That was just a special swearing-in. So I'm really looking forward to working together.
Ms. Terry Graham.
Yes, thank you. I'd also like to welcome Maryline. I've, I've just enjoyed spending time with her over the last couple of weeks, and we've worked together, going over the council meetings and agendas, and she has just been a joy. And I just wish that she has a incredible two-year term and then is re-elected. But I wish everybody Happy Holidays and Happy New Year. Thank you.
I'm not going to suck up anymore. Everybody's, and I'm, as I said in the beginning, I'm excited about Maryline coming on board. I think she'll bring a new perspective to this, not only this council, but to our community, and I'm excited about working with you. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and a safe holidays. Show Cause Hearing, we have nothing for that. Citizens input, we've got six people that have signed up. It seems like all of them are signed up for the topic is hands-free, and I'll start at the top. I'm not sure when these folks signed in. Allegra Goodman, 3847 Plumcrest Road, Smyrna, Georgia. Hands-free is her topic.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Congratulations. I just wanted to say that I am absolutely for the hands-free ordinance. I spent a lot of time taking care of my sister with cancer this past year up in New York and New Jersey, and they have these ordinances, and it is a much safer place. In speaking with people in my neighborhood and around the area, they would like to know if it's possible to see the statistics that show that the hands-free does actually cause accidents. They don't think it does. I, I full-heartedly agree, so I support it. Thank you.
Terry, will you set the, Scott Arnold, 999 Feather, Penfeather Court, Lawrenceville, hands-free.
Hey, everybody. I live in Lawrenceville, working Woodstock, that's 88 miles round trip, and I am for hands-free. Every single day that we drive our car, in our car, we basically react to the brake lights in front. Being on a motorcycle, I don't have the luxury of sides. I see things that the average car driver does not see. Last, two weeks ago, I actually committed a misdemeanor. I took pictures of people driving, texting, watching ESPN, all in their car, when basically I'm driving the motorcycle and it's interfering with everybody's life here. The worst-case scenario I had, 400 North, lady pulled out in front of me, excuse me, just a little nervous. She had earplugs on, doing FaceTime on an iPad. FaceTime on an iPad. Please, please approve this. Thank you.
Tom Bartlett, 3270 Isolene Way, Smyrna, hands-free.
Thank you for hearing me. Congratulations. Very exciting. Also want to ask that, for approval on the hands-free, it's a public safety issue. It really is. If, since it's come up in Smyrna, I've really taken notice of myself, because I'm no angel. But really, what else is going on around me, and it's, it's pretty disturbing. So I got the, I got the hands-free in the stocking already for, for us at home, and so I urge y'all's approval. Thank you.
Nickle Fraschion, 2153 Nancy Circle, hands-free. That is French, isn't it?
It is. I was actually born in Louisiana, so it's Cajun.
Same thing.
But to that point, I was raised in Smyrna. Moved here when I was two, graduated from Brown Elementary, Griffin, Campbell High School, got married, moved back here, have two girls, and I want to speak on the ordinance as well that I am wholeheartedly for it. We, I see, I live over two miles from the stadium, over by Argyle, so every game day we see hundreds, if not thousands, of people streaming, going down to the game, crossing roads. It just, it just, and I second what they said. I see people on their phone, on their cars, and just not paying attention, and we have laws that protect us from drunk drivers. We have laws that protect ourselves to wear seatbelts, and I just think this is just the next evolution in this ordinance to help us as a community to get better about doing this. So, thank you.
Richard Shannon, 260 Nancy Circle, hands-free is his topic.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Maryline, congratulations. It's a great day. So I was excited to hear that this was up for a vote, very much in favor of the hands-free. First speaker spoke about driving in New Jersey and New York. I've spent some time driving up in DC over the past couple of years where they have the hands-free law, and it makes you just more conscious and more aware, because it's taken seriously by the citizens. Once it's made into law, people will follow it. And when I was walking my dog, the other day, I was at, on Campbell Road, at Campbell Nancy Circle, right by the, the, the bridge, man pulled up in his truck, had two cars behind him, sat, sat at the stop sign, flipping through Instagram while the cars were behind him, waiting. And it's just, it's just ridiculous. People need to get shaken a little bit, and again, I'm, I'm all for it. Look forward to a passing. Thanks for your time.
Mike Orhan of 2866 Green Cove Way, his topic is Reed House.
My rights. Thank you.
You're kidding. You're the only one that didn't want to talk about hands-free.
No dogs.
All right. That concludes everyone that's signed up to speak. I normally do not allow that, but it's Christmas, you're going to get your Christmas present, so you can come forward. The last time I did this, the person blasted me, so.
Oh, I'm not going to.
What's your name, and where do you live, and what's your topic?
My name is Angie Fees. I live at 4050 Kenway Place. I live in King Valley, right by King Springs Elementary. My husband and I moved here back in 2005, and we now have three small children, and I'm here to speak in support of the hands-free ordinance. I think we have an opportunity to make the city safer for our residents and our families. And I want to thank Councilman Norton, the rest of the council, for being proactive and a leader among all cities in the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't even see what time it is. It's, I think it's 10 minutes after the kickoff.
Eight, four, six minutes after the kickoff.
I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy 2018, and everybody have a great holiday. I declare this meeting adjourned at 8:22.